Just should start it up. And now we're gonna start streaming.
Oh no, I broke it.
Hi everyone. We're here, I am Seem Veritas and I am joined by?
I am your.
Wait, Dear Supreme doesn't break the com- yes, I did not break the computer, we're here. Hello everyone. We are live, we are here. Uh, let me go ahead and get this, so, we are finally at our, uh, the second... And we're gonna go and answer all the questions again, just to...
Yeah, I think, well, I think I answered like two, but then we realized it wasn't recording, or that we had that issue, so...
Yeah, so we'll just, we'll answer it all again for everybody, so, it's not a mystery anymore. But, uh, so, uh, this is our town hall meeting. Uh, if you haven't noticed, that's because Nora is here to answer all your lovely questions. Uh, so I'm gonna go over some of the current events right now. Uh, so go, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, as far as the Dungeon Earring Vacation Brochure Contest, uh, participation prizes have gone out, and they should be, and basically the office is still voting on who won, so, soon. Hopefully by tomorrow, Vacation Midgard, same thing, participation prizes are out. Uh, we're just waiting for the results, Summer Sharing Event is currently active. And I don't know if you guys have noticed, but you guys have already hit beyond all of the things that we had.
We had like five tiers, and we went through all five tiers, so Idun, or Idun, I'm not, I'm not pronouncing correctly again, uh, is working on another ten tiers, um, that we're gonna release this week, so that they can, people can continue to participate, and then unlock, uh, new kinda item giveaways, and new tiers for that EXP boost, and all kinds of stuff.
Yes, everyone was actually quite active with that, I was surprised, dang. Also makes me wish now I actually have to pay attention towards my Twitter, 'cause there's like two hundred and fifty-five people now.
Yeah. I felt obligated to tweet today.
Something, yeah, just, just do tweets every day of, you know, various octopi.
At least this month, I guess, yeah. Oh yeah, that would be good.
Just octopi, every day, new octopi. And then, uh, let's see, what else we got? So, uh, yep, got the connection prizes, what else?
Right now we have our big, uh, sort of Independence Day July sale that's gonna run through the thirteenth. Um, we have our EXP event, um, which I think is ending tomorrow, but because of that, uh, Summer Sharing Event, we're actually gonna have an EXP event that follows it. I think it's gonna be less, because we only hit a certain tier, so we're gonna go from like five hundred percent to whatever tier we hit. Uh, but, um, we'll still have that going, we have happy hour boxes that are gonna be running for another week until, and then through the thirteenth. Um, and yeah, we have other stuff playing.
Yeah, we've got all kinds of stuff, although I'm so happy about the, I, I leveled again, very proud of myself on all of it.
Five hundred percent EXP is pretty popular, yeah.
So amazing, I'm just gonna keep leveling, it'd be amazing. Alright, so, I spent my participation, yes, I heard, awesome, call it eating the apple, and I should tweet you random bunnies to you. Yes, please tweet random bunnies, we love random bunnies. So, now that we've gone through kind of that, we might as well go ahead and get into the questions, 'cause that's what this entire event is for after all.
Yep.
So, I'm gonna just start going through them, we're gonna start with Isaac GS, who asks, "The large robber bug card is bugged, when will you solve the problem?"
Um, so I touched on this a little bit in the last stream before I think we went down, but, uh, I checked on this, and the large robber bug card actually drops off of the flying robber bugs in Culver of Abyss, so, uh, if you're looking for a large robber bug that's dropping a card, it's actually the flying robber bug that drops it. So that might be a little bit confusing, but, um, it should drop off of, um, the different versions of Culver. Um, but that's what you're gonna wanna look for, the flying robber bug.
Just do what I do, kill everything in Culver.
Yeah.
Decimate it. Alright, next question is from Wickeden, and Wickeden asks, "A lot."
Oh, it looks like our picture's a little...
Oh, is it, oh, yeah, it's over a little bit, let me move that over so you can, oh, I don't know. Yeah, we can shrink that down, so you can all actually see the question, where is the question? Is the question? That is not the question. Window's open, there, there it is. There we go.
Cool.
Perfect. Alright, so, "Greetings, my question is, if the Beastmaster could in the future use Final Form Ymir Gaia in the bear form and, or as tiger too?"
Um, so that would just be a balance question, uh, because Beastmasters have the forms, um, and they also have a Ymir form, as well as the other classes. If they have, if they can use their Ymir form with their bear or tiger form, it would just be a question of balance, does that make the Beastmaster too crazy powerful, um, or do we need to buff the other Ymir forms, do we need to buff the other classes? So, uh, in the future, it's a possibility, um, but that would be our concern. Our concern right now is a lot of bugs, and a lot of balance fixes that we're trying to go through for the game. Um, so, adding that to Beastmasters, we'd wanna look at the other classes, just to make sure that there isn't that disparity.
Sweet. And I, I do love that it's in two languages.
Yeah.
RB Beam, expert here, yes, too powerful, nerf everything. Yeah, so just nerf everything, y'all get just a knife, no spells. Alright, four-nine-one, lots of numbers.
Steam user, yeah.
Steam user, uh, asks, "There's a plan in the future to see pets and cards from Dark Whisper and Payon Zone."
Uh, I think this is the question we froze on last time, so...
Yes.
Uh, yes, um, there's a plan right now to streamline sort of our leveling areas that are an issue. Um, Dark Whisper, Payon, um, even Advent of Valkyrie areas with Deer Desert and stuff, we're looking at to make easier, trying to get that feel back of, uh, Legend of the Second and that whole thing. And so, part of that would be, um, putting in cards and DNA that were missing. Um, that, I mean, cards especially are something that you should be upgrading, uh, every, every few levels as you're leveling up, um, 'cause they contribute to how well you can level in the game. Um, there are certain un-incomplete, uh, assets that we found that we can work on, that were, looks like they were being focused on for those areas. So, uh, yeah, definitely, um, there is a plan, and it's part of that whole, um, streamlining thing.
Uh, so apparently, Alice in Wonderland is asking, "Hey, why is there a head without a hat? Isn't this a warp portal stream?" Is what Ally said, fun fact, Dark Whisper assets and cards are already made, true. Yeah, so, uh, you need a hat apparently, I'm just, they're saying, so...
A lot of the, yeah, you can see, some people have taken apart the client, you can see what's in there, and some of the stuff was mostly developed and just never implemented, for various reasons. It just could be they weren't settled on the stats or the effects, or just the last pieces weren't put in, and... There could've been a whole bunch of reasons, it's hard to say, but...
Yeah, part of the plan. Yes, that's why, when you do this, we'll get this all done. Alright, next question is from Junath, "Still wondering why Condor doesn't have DNA."
So that would be, um, sort of like the last question, except that's, that's in Deer Desert. Uh, there's a lot of stuff that, that there was DNA in cards missing for in leveling zones, Condors would be one of them. Um, I don't know offhand if there's one that's, that was partially developed, um, but I'm sure some of our players know, they might tell us in the chat, but, uh, uh, they would definitely be targeted, because those are the fir-, one of the first things that you, you hit up, once you're going to master levels, so...
Also, apparently you should've been wearing your squid hat.
The squid hat, uh, actually isn't a great hat, 'cause it doesn't have, like, it doesn't wrap around the head, it just sort of sits on top of my head, and so, because it's so tall, it just falls over, but...
That's why you need to take him, just tie the tentacles, and just tie it to your head. Alright, or, you know, or, you can just send him another, another tentacle hat.
I'm running out of desk space for all those.
Alright, next question is from Plushy, "I know you guys have problems with patching, or any other problems, and therefore things go slowly. In that case, why don't you show us what you guys got so far, any plans created? New maps, items, gears, a team colleague at his work, any kind of materials, whatever it is, just show us. What did you guys do in those months? Any progress? Oh, and don't just tell us, but also show us, players will be pleased when they see these things with their own eyes."
Um, so what we wanna do is we wanna bring back preview streams, we don't have anything right now to preview that's really all that interesting. Uh, if you talk to our VCRs, they know right now that we're actually testing a whole bunch of bugs that our team has gotten through. As far as patching goes, we actually, uh, resolved those issues last week, and so we're, we're rolling through and starting to test new builds, focusing first on a lot of longstanding bugs, um, that need to be addressed, falling damage, out of range, all that kinda stuff that people have wanted to be fixed for a long time. Those sort of things don't really work on a preview stream, uh, unless you're like a really active player that just wants to see a bug fix, uh, so...
Yeah, they're, they're not very excited.
But I do like the ideas of, of showing more on, on what we're doing, and all that kinda stuff. I'm gonna see about how we can share that, um, because once we do get this rolling out, uh, I would like to do preview streams to show people how stuff's gonna work. Uh, even if it's like us redoing one of the systems, like Card Refinement, we can do a preview stream, and we can show, uh, the players how that's gonna work, or, um, how easy it's gonna be, or any of that kinda stuff, so... Um, yeah, uh, I like the idea, um, patching is a go, we're testing right now, expect bug fixes soon. Uh, and we'll look into bringing back preview streams now that we have stuff.
Yay, stop.
We wanna show off stuff that's interesting to watch.
Yeah, I don't think it's very interesting to watch us go up and kill things, it works!
Yeah, look, I'm not taking falling damage anymore, or I'm not dying from crazy falling damage, yeah.
I, I will say, I'm happy about that, I kept dying because of that falling damage one.
Yeah.
Next, in our list, is from Trialbeak, Drawbike?
Keyboard backwards.
Ethely. I'm just saying. "Are the nuts and bolts man aged by a bear and a bird?" Managed by a bear and a burr.
Uh, I wrote down my answer here last week of, "I think the bear would eat the nuts, and the bird would choke on the bolts," so no.
Yes. Alright, next question, from Ethely again. "Will we see more equipment similar to Ignitus?"
Ignatius.
Ignatius, high stats, but no rune slots or honing, in the future.
Um, oh my god, I wrote a giant thing on this, I don't know how to write a song.
You did write a giant thing on this.
Um, I wrote, uh, not sure, um, we like moving in a direction of design development that we know our community of players likes. We've had that for over three years now. Um, when we approach new development, we're looking at what has worked in the past, that the players have enjoyed, what has worked elsewhere, either in our other games or other games we've played, experienced, and what innovations we could do to make the game more interesting, without adding on too many complications. Uh, regarding rune slots and honing, the original intent was actually not to bring seed runes into master level content, uh, and actually replace it with honing, which was, um, initially called grinding, before we decided to, uh, change the name. Unfortunately, uh, due to bugs with honing when we first came out with Advent of Valkyrie, uh, some people might remember, uh, a live build we came out with, where people's stats went crazy high, and we had to do, I think, one of the only rollbacks we ever had to do. It couldn't be delivered, so, um, the issue was, we had players going through master level content without honing to help them out, and without seed runes, and so Gravity made the decision that they were gonna bring back seed runes, not only because it would help them give them that boost that honing wasn't there for, uh, but also they saw that people were investing in like the market and seed runes and stuff like that, and if they just kinda dropped that system, then a whole bunch of people probably would've gotten mad that, "Hey, I went and farmed all these seed runes, and now they're basically worthless."
Yeah.
So as far as Ignatius equipment goes, um, it's a possibility, I mean, we, we just have to see if that's a smart, the smartest way of approaching newer items. Ignatius sort of was a weird, um, not weird, but different attempt at, at equipment that they hadn't done before. Um, so, uh, it all depends on if we think it works, and if we think the players think it works, and, uh, yeah, so, possibility.
Alright, our next contestant, is from Kurio Kaneko, I think I said that right? "They would restrict gear, they should restrict gears at WO map, in my opinion. Allowed to insert only one to two close runes?"
Uh, these PvP runes, CLS runes.
Ah, CLS runes into them, no hones, or RNG, make the gear cards useless.
Um, so, uh, I don't know about specifically those changes, but yes, I think we want to, uh, approach our PvP maps, uh, with, um, the same mindset, sort of as Colosseum, we wanna have a more even playing field for people. Um, we've gotten away from separating PvP gear from PVE gear, 'cause we haven't had new PvP gear since fifty. One of the ideas is bringing back PvP gear, determining what that gear would be, and then also, if we implement that, what we could then restrict on a PvP map like WO, that is causing crazy balance issues right now. Uh, we, we wanna get away from the one shots, and, and all that kinda stuff that has sort of, uh, spoiled PvP or WO PvP for people. Uh, we wanna get back to more engaging battles like we had at level fifty. Um, and so, we're looking at how we can now move into that. Um, because we don't really wanna just jump into like really harsh sanctions on people, who maybe have invested in certain things. So it's definitely on the list to address, because WO is still one of the biggest draws, uh, for a lot of our players. Um, and I know a lot of guilds just don't do WO, because they don't feel like they have a chance, and so, we're looking at not only how to help balance the playing field, but also what to provide to like those guilds that maybe don't feel like they'd ever have a chance taking on, uh, a guild alliance, or taking a fort, or anything like that, so...
Well, another thing actually just reminded me is, I know some guilds are on different parts of the world and can't cur-, can't currently make the current WO times. So right now, on our forums, and on our, uh, yeah, on our forums, we have a, uh...
Survey.
A survey out, so, uh, we are actually looking to change the current times to make it more accessible to more people, and there's two times up for vote, I believe.
I think it's, it's a, it's a couple of different times that are up right now, there was a first survey, and now this is sort of a more condensed survey based on, um...
The results of the vote, yeah.
Yeah, the first one, and so, um, we should have a change in time by the end of this month, uh, actually sooner than the end of the month.
Yeah, so hopefully that'll also give more guilds a chance to participate.
Right, uh, because we have so many regions now across the, across the world, we have so many people participating. Um, I think maybe what we're looking at, and this is, don't take my word for it, 'cause I haven't looked at the results of the survey, but, um, we'll likely have a time that works really well for one side of the globe, and another time that works really well for the other side of the globe, 'cause we just have so many people...
Yeah.
Playing on, on the different parts of the globe, that it wouldn't, it would be unfair if we had it at the same...
Yeah.
Time, sorta like how we have it now, I think we have it at five PM, our time on the two days that are happening, and that's not, that doesn't work for...
Yeah.
The other side, so, um, yeah.
Hopefully we'll see a lot more action as far as who's taking the castles and all that stuff, right?
We'll see.
Yes. Alright, next question. Our, ooh, is from Freaky Jin, "Is there a future plan about rebirth system?"
So, um, they, I believe are referencing the Ragnarok Online Rebirth System.
Yes.
Um, there has, uh, uh, there's been talk, but there's nothing more than talk right now. We're, we're kinda focused on fixing the game, addressing the balance issues, our next step with Niflheim, what we can do with that. Uh, we have some concepts for new classes that are also still in discussion phase. Uh, but adopting more RO1 systems would be good, we just wanna be smart about it, because a rebirth system would be, uh, a large undertaking. So right now, it's just an idea as much as probably players are talking about rebirth system on RO2. Um, it's not on a schedule, it's not on a plan, uh, but it's not, it's still something that, um, we like to talk about and how it would work, but it would be something that would be a really big undertaking.
It'd be awesome.
To, to expand the classes, it would be a good opportunity to, I think, address a lot of maybe issues within the classes, um, in, in going forward, um, but...
Like a gunslinger class.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not like a twenty sixteen thing that's, that's gonna happen, so...
One day, we, we wish upon a star.
Yeah.
This is one day. Alright, "Will the Depara items come back, and will Meneal sell mount extenders?" This is from Isaac GS.
So, um, what did I do with that question? Oh, right here, uh, yeah, so the Depara items, uh, were behind us needing to fix the patching process, and so, every time the items came in, it was a new patch basically, and that's why you only saw the EXP boost, but not the items. Now we have that going, we should, I don't think we're gonna have it this month, because we're doing the Summer Sharing Event, which is gonna be an EXP boost, and so, I don't think there's gonna be a Depara one this month, because it would be like, if they stacked, it would be an insane amount of EXP. Um, but likely it'll be back for, um, what month is it now? So August, right?
Yes, July.
Um, as far as, uh, mount extenders, um, would they make sense in Munal, or would they make sense in Taxi, the, uh, Prontera Mount Vendor? Um, "How would you want to acquire them? Does any chance coupons?" Uh, I'm not against the idea, it's just, um...
All of the above.
Figuring out where it fits, uh, for me, I think going, uh, giving them to the Mount Vendor, uh, would kinda make more sense, since he... It needs, it needs some love, he hasn't, he hasn't been updated in a long time, so...
Makes sense, the mount guy, Mount Vendor.
Plus his name is Taxi, so...
There you go. Alright, next on our list, is from Wickeden again. "Chef Job will have new recipes and epic recipes finally?"
Um, so my, what I wrote down last week was, "As long as it isn't pineapple pizza, I'm down for new recipes for all crafting jobs." Uh, so yeah, there's a lot, there's some crafting jobs that need more love than others, um, and, and yeah, we can definitely look into it now that we can start working on those. Uh, if you have any funny or relevant, uh, recipes, do you think should go into the game? Feel free to post them on the forums, and we check it out, and we'll, we like adopting player ideas, so...
I think we should just have like Nora's recipe for fried, I don't know. It'd be funny, I kinda wanna like try these in Spanish too, just for fun, but... Just, alright, the next one is from Ryzik, okay, you can't see the name down, that's a really big thing.
Yeah.
"Any update on rune seed roll chance? It is possible to remove, to remove two-stage RNG from Chaney's Soul. For example, you can obtain something like swag tickets, kaffa ruby tickets, etc., tickets, which you can exchange with capra for your desired set."
Uh, so rune, or seed rune roll chances, uh, yeah, we're actually tinkering with and working on, uh, how to, to, to improve that, and, and what that would look like right now. The, I, I, that's gonna probably be in July, right now it's just a matter of us, uh, applying changes and hoping that it doesn't crash our test servers, which I accidentally did, I think a week ago. Uh, yeah, that'll come soon, um, we think that, uh, a lot of the higher tiered stuff needs to be more available. Um, a lot of people think that it actually, um, was patched out of the game, because it's so hard to get, it's actually not true, it's just so impossibly hard to get that, uh, so few people have it, so... Um, eh, as far as the Chaney Soul and all that other stuff, uh, we're gonna be looking at the entire Diamond System and the Chaney System, and there's gonna be a lot of changes coming out soon. Um, including with Diamond Scrolls, trying to loosen up that restriction of one daily, uh, the no-trade of all those items, I know is a big issue for players who get something they can't use and can't trade, and, and they could disassemble, but, yeah. Um, and then even Diamond Baskets from the shop, so, um, expect changes there, um, this month and next month.
Sweet. Alright, our next one is from Derek. "Why aren't there any short-distance kaffa fly girls in Dire? Are we going to get more quests for MP to shorten the endless MP grinding? What are you going to do about high MP to level?"
Uh, so to answer the first question, uh, that is something that we have in the queue to be worked on, to add those fly girls finally to Deer Desert.
Idun is on.
The, uh, originally they weren't in, because it was new content, and they wanted people to explore it, uh, and not just kind of like rush through it with fly girls, I don't know. Um, but I, now that it's, uh, sort of older content, it's been out for a couple of years, I think it's smart to allow people to navigate that area a little bit better, a little bit easier.
Yes, please.
Um, "Are we going to get more quests for MP to shorten the endless MP grinding?" Yeah, it's part of the, um, streamlining project that we're working on for, um, uh, for leveling, and especially master leveling. Uh, it's also implementing new quests, so that you're not, even if we reduce, uh, MP requirements, and we make monsters drop a little bit more EXP, you're still not feeling like you're grinding through monsters just to get levels, 'cause for me, I like to level when I'm actually feeling like I'm contributing to a quest, or a story, or something like that, so, that's also on the list, we have some concepts already ready, um, so we're gonna be working on rolling those out. And, "What are you gonna do about high MP to level?" Um, yeah, like I said, we're gonna be, um, we're gonna be reducing MP, uh, uh, required per level, um, to be a little bit more consistent with the rates that you see, um, prior to master levels. Um, so that it is easier just to get up, 'cause a, a lot of people kinda drop off, or they have trouble finding a group, if they're like friends, or their guild kinda levels out, levels them, and getting your buddy to come down and help you out when he's ten or twenty levels above you is always a problem with any game. Uh, so, uh, we're gonna be, um, rolling those out, I think we already basically have an idea of what, what values we wanna set them to, but it was, uh, it requires a patch in order to change it otherwise. Um, stuff like Gilgamesh wasn't gonna tell you exactly the right amount, it was gonna tell you the wrong amount if we didn't patch it, so, that'll be coming out.
It's a mystery, that's all you get. So what I'm hearing is actually just wait, and just not level for a bit, and just... Wait till everything gets fixed, and then I'll just slide on through. Alright, next, this is from Rakum. "Is there any plans about union quests and rewards? For example, new items on NPC shops and new quests have more point report, more point rewards, or adjustments for old ones. Can you consider decreasing the time to quit a union? I think two weeks is a lot of time."
I think two weeks is a lot of time too. Uh, yeah, we'll look into decreasing that time. Uh, also, union's definitely an upgrade, we have a, a couple concepts from our VCR group for updating those unions that we've, we've actually had for a long time, uh, that I think we'll probably go with first. It includes, um, updating stuff for the unions, updating the items, and then I think it also has a couple other new unions, um, that we can implement. Um, but then, yeah, decreasing it from two weeks, I think is gonna be important, so... Uh, if you have an idea of what you feel like a good amount of time would be in between, we'll, we'll test it out, we'll see if it works, and we'll see if there's any issues with that. Um, but yes.
Uh, just to, for those in our chat, don't worry, I'm not ignoring you, I do see the questions and stuff, I'm just trying to get through these questions that have been sitting on our forums for a while first, and then we're gonna have an entire section where we can answer all the silly questions you have on our chat. Alright, the next one is from Wickeden again. "Because there are so many increases in the final damage of critical hits either by skill, items, etc., and there is no resistance or damage reduction from critical hits, in the future, will there exist effects who decrease the final damage of critics, or critics, haha."
Well, it says critics, but...
That's true.
Critical hits probably, yeah.
Critical hits, in the same way that piercing effect decrease ignores defense. Why so many skill effects who do dam-, who do damage over time are not treat, treated? Treated as elemental damage or elemental defenses and is not working on them, what do you think about? What do you think about it?
Uh, so, um, having a resistance to critical hits, um, I think I was actually having a conversation with some of our volunteers about a stat that can be used, and I'm sure one of them is gonna tell me in the chat, um, last week, and I thought I wrote it down, but, uh, um, yeah, it, definitely, I think that goes into the whole balance thing, especially with, with PvP, of avoiding one-shots, and, and that whole thing where you just kinda take away any chance of, of defending yourself if you're just destroyed off the bat. Uh, so, we'll be looking into ways to doing that, if that's a stat that can affect critical hits, then that'll work. I know other games that have used that successfully, um, or maybe an existing stat that we have that just can be applied to doing that. Um, the second question was, "Why so many skill effects do damage over time not treat as elemental damage, or defense not working on, what do you think about that?" Um, yeah, like I said, this is gonna go into, uh, sort of a balance question of how do we treat our, uh, dots, and, um, doing that kinda stuff, and bringing back, um, I think that, I think I'm addressing a different thing with the elements that we had, was like Deer Desert and stuff that kinda went away. Um, but, um, yeah, we'll look into, um, wh-, how we can treat dots, if, if we need to, if we think that they're gonna be an issue, or if they're just gonna be resolved if we, if we address other balance issues with it, um...
And Ethely does bring up, "Perry used to be good for reducing critical damage."
I think Perry was actually the stat that we talked about.
Yes, it was probably it right there.
So yeah, like, it, it, it might be Perry that we just kind of, uh, touch up on and we tweak. I know with a lot of things, uh, we had a stat creep issue, and stat creep, for people who don't know, is when you add on a bunch of new levels over time, you're gonna have an issue where people become too powerful, and the result of that, which you'll see in PvP and WO, is a lot of people getting one-shotted. Um, and what happens is you kinda have to ramp up your, your enemies and stuff to crazy amounts, and so they're sort of like bosses in themselves. And so, um, yeah, we're gonna kinda be working our way back from that. Um, it's easy to apply a balance fix for PvP, i- in order to avoid one-shotting, but then if you sort of neuter people in PVE, that's gonna be a big issue. Um, so we'll be testing a lot of these balance ideas, and if you have any, um, use the forum. The forum is a great place to kinda drop your idea and get feedback on. Some feedback might be critical. But we're always paying attention to that kinda stuff, and, uh, it, it's actually better to post it in the forum to get that feedback, than to just necessarily PM us. Um, I do get PMs and I check my PMs, I don't always respond to them in a timely fashion cuz I'm doing a bunch of stuff, but uh. Uh, a lot of the times I will respond with that's a great idea. Um, maybe we'll talk to volunteers about it or maybe post it to the forum because we like to see. What the community of our players who are engaged in the game, um, think about those ideas, so.
I also wanna add, um, we do have those or RO2 representatives that are great to bounce ideas off of. And not only that, but once an idea is mostly fleshed out, they can add it to our blog and we can put it on the list and it can go further into discussion and even. Maybe one day testing and stuff, I know there's a lot of ideas that have gone in that are direct results of player input. So, yeah, don't, don't hesitate to utilize our representatives, that's what they're there for. Um, also, uh, one of the things that was brought up today was also just the. You know, we do have representatives who speak different languages, so if you really wanna discuss something and maybe it's a little hard to do it in English. Feel free to ask, I mean, oh, we have some that are are fluent in Portuguese, uh. Thai, Thai, yeah, Taiwanese and a few others that can, like if you are uncomfortable saying it. Talk to them, they can bring it to us and kind of, you know.
We, yeah, we, I think we cover like nine different time zones with our VCRs and so they're all over the place. If you, uh, we have international forums for RO2, if you post in there, I'm sure they'll see it or check it out, we'll relay it. Uh, we also have people that work here that speak those languages. Um, and if it's a language that isn't represented in an international forum, feel free to post it in in the uh, in the main forum and I'm sure somebody will help.
Unless it's like ancient Greek, I think will be lost forever. Alright, so I'm not gonna say his name. But, when is the release date of Niflheim, is it near or never to release?
Uh, it's not near and it's not never to release, um, so. It took us a while to get the patching underway and our big focus right now is is addressing the current. Uh, game and and doing a lot of fixes and balance changes and all that kinda stuff that we know that our players have wanted for a long time. And will be good for longevity of the game, uh, Niflheim, when we took over, was about halfway completed. Um, so we're gonna be organizing our teams to kind of work on the rest of uh the content. Uh, our folk, our aim right now is to get it in before the end of the year. But we don't really have a hard date right now, we just have to see what else needs to go in, what has been done. Cuz certain things take a lot longer than other things, um, building an entire new zone or new map is gonna take a long time versus implementing a new quest or something like that, so. Not near, but not never to release is my answer, I guess. New costumes for Chaney is uh in the same vein, sort of, but less of a long-term thing. Uh, we do know that they were working on about four other concepts, but when we took over, uh, those would probably be the four that we focus on first. Um, seeing where they're at, uh, and then implementing those, a lot of them are really cool, I think there was a Samurai one. There was a Gundam-esque looking costume concept that was really cool. I don't think we can call it that, um, but yeah, those will be coming sooner than Niflheim, but. Uh, it'll be about assigning our people to work on it and then fixing it and then. Yes.
Cool, I think, let's see, we have one more and this is from Ryzik again, who says. It is possible to increase diamond obtained from those swamped scrolls, maybe ten to twenty percent?
Um, I think the better solution would be to um reduce the restriction of one daily that was implemented. Just before we took over, uh, I know that when they first came out, it was um. Free-for-all and then they implemented, you can only do one scroll a day. Uh, and I think if we reduce that restriction, I don't know if we're just gonna remove it, but uh increasing it to a certain amount, twenty or twenty-five or however many a day that you can do. Might help what they're trying to achieve, um, without actually having to increase the diamond scroll amounts. Um, cuz I know a lot of people did not like the restriction going in and I thought it was too restrictive too, so.
Yeah, alright, so, I think that's the last of our questions, so. I'm gonna leave this up to any other questions and I know you guys had been making comments in here and now I've gotta find them all. Um, I don't know why. Where, alright. So one player, Sturmy, is like, are we going to fix the lag for European players? I know there's already been a discussion between Eppoli and a few others on this issue. But I guess maybe we have some ju- suggestions or maybe a thought on that?
I would say if you have a lag issue and 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 you're talking about like latency as as in your internet connection to us. Versus like a framerate issue, whether you have a a poor framerate problem. Uh, make a support ticket so that our our GM team can help you um see maybe what's going wrong with the connection, uh, as Eppoli pointed out. Um, I believe she's from the.
UK.
Yeah, so, um, and there wasn't an issue there, I haven't heard of another issue there, but sometimes hiccups happen.
And there could be a lot of different situations, it could be your location you're in, this provider speed. Um, when you make a ticket, um, you might wanna include a tracer, just so we can see where everything is kinda happening.
If you don't know how to do that, our GMs will tell you how to do that, so that that's what I mean by making a support ticket, cuz they'll probably ask you to do that and they'll show you how to do that. So it kinda just tells you what is going wrong. If you mean lag as in framerate, uh, we're looking into ways to optimize the game, cuz I know framerate has been an issue for a long time. Um, that's a little tricky cuz you're kind of pulling it apart to see what can be communicating better. But that's, that's an active thing that we'll be working on to try and figure out.
We will do our best.
So if it's, if it's latency, as in lag, as in uh your internet connection or the connection to the game, make a support ticket. Uh, if you're talking about like framerate, we're working on it.
Cool, alright, uh, and also Arbelist suggests as far as a recipe fried squid drops off in Roar Red Buffs.
That's, that's terrible, isn't it? Wouldn't that basically be a fried piece of me?
Yes. So they will kill you apparently and then fry you up.
Only if we can have like cooked bear burgers, that was Arby that suggested that.
Yes, that was, that was Arby, Arbelist RO2. Alright, so let's see, oh, and uh for those who haven't noticed, Edun has joined us in chat, she says fly girls are so nineties. Uh, let's see, any other, in fact, can we enable flight paths for cannons? That's from Eppoli. I want to see human cannonball, cannonballs or gnoll cannonballs, your thoughts?
Cannon bears, bear cannonballs and or or cannon bears, that sounds frightening, I'm not, I don't know what that is, maybe. Unless you mean shooting a bear out of a cannon, but a cannon bear, I don't even know, that sounds like my nightmare.
Alright, let's see, dots are on the board for highly debated balance issues, yes, so again. Feel free to ask them and Edun says I only send suggestions in Latin and apparently so does Dragonlark. And Eppoli says, oh, please make you, oh, please, I make use of colorful language with British English, one would be most pleased. And then uh Eppoli brought up the Gothic Lolita. Now, funny you mention that, because when I was going through some of our art, which I don't know if you've noticed, I found a bunch of gnoll art, which I was very excited about. But I saw a Lolita costume, there was like, there was a set where it was like a Gothic guy in a Gothic Lolita outfit, I don't know if. If that's anywhere currently or if there's, it looked cool.
I know that there's like, oop, I know that there's a uh a Gothic costume. That I'm pretty sure that the the gnoll should be able to use right now, so I don't know if that's the one I'm thinking of, I'd have to see the art to see, but I know there's one in-game that could be used. I just don't know which one, yeah.
And then uh apparently there is a suggestion for a bear whoa robe.
There's a bear robe. Bear whoa robe, um, it's got a little, I think, I'm pretty sure my uh cool guild that I'm in has the the bear one that has it like right. On the chest.
No, well, okay, so they're saying a panda costume for Arby, but apparently it can't be worn outside of whoa. I think he wants to wear it in outside of whoa. Just sit outside the whoa map and look cuddly. Yes, alright, I want bear decorations, bows and color patterns, your thoughts?
What, what do they want?
So, uh, Edun suggests, I want bear decorations, bows and colorful patterns, ice bears, panda bears and guppy bears.
That would be cool, cuz we're, we're thinking of, uh, well, I've been thinking of for a long time, but we've wanted, um.
Put that over there, cuz this was brought up.
I don't think so. We've wanted um customization options, I think that was a suggestion that we sent in like months before we even launched the game, we're like, oh. You know, uh, an option to customize your character after the fact or new options would be cool, so. That is one of the things that was on our list after we're tackling all this stuff that we wanna implement, like new hairstyles and the ability to change your hair and all that stuff.
That would be awesome.
We know how to, it's gonna be a lot of, um, the process of how to do that and and how to do it smoothly. Um, so that it's just automated and people can go and do it themselves, uh, without us having to tinker with it, so. Getting that process up and running is probably gonna be the longer thing than actually determining how to do it. And then with that, new skins for Beastmaster, I would say maybe. I like the idea, um, I don't wanna promise anything, but I can see if there's new customization options for regular people. Uh, options for Beastmasters to change their skin would be cool, I though I'd have to check and see. If that's possible in the new, the current system or we'd have to, we'd have to work on something for that, but I like the idea.
And then Edun uh brought up, by the way, if you're hanging out until the end, you will have a thirty-minute window to use a special code. For the summer sharing event for a bonus entry. And she included, she included the little thing in here, so uh, stick around. And she was all, I was referencing the concept art for the unreleased one, by the way. Yes, okay, so we probably saw the same one Eppoli, which looked really cool and I really wanted it and it looked really cute. Except my guy's a guy, so he would have all the little straps. Basically, just be strapped and. Alright, Sankor asks, what is this? Oh, uh, are you asking about the Glimo event or are you asking about something else or this in general?
I don't know.
I have no idea, alright, Squiggle Mount, when?
Uh, as soon as possible. No, uh. Uh, whatever, it makes sense, I'm not gonna try and force that one through just because it's, it's the the mount I will ride forever.
Yes, we did blow through the questions today, I, I'm surprised, so if anyone has any other questions, please, please. Feel free to bring them up, I don't know what else to say other than, cool, there's lots of stuff, we got ten minutes. Uh, gummy bear skin for grizzly form, please, make it happen. Can we have a new guild cape event?
By guild cape event, do you mean one where everybody gets the same cape that has like the uh one hundred on the back? I don't remember.
I thought I saw a cape and it has a little poring on the back.
We also have a, uh. We have a thing with our VCRs whenever anybody mentions guild capes, um. A gif pops up that expresses something about guild capes. I like the one from The Incredibles that says no capes.
No caps, no caps.
I do like guild capes and the guild cape idea, but it might be too soon for some people, even though that was three years ago.
Alright, which would Nor choose, shave his beard or eat a pineapple pizza?
I would probably, if I given the choice, I'd probably eat the pineapple pizza.
Guild back blankets, yes. Alright, so, eh, we, we don't have any more que- oh, wait, there's a picture, what is this? No, yeah, there is, no caps. Can I get this to work? Does it wanna, it just does not wanna show up over here at all on the thing, oh, well. Yeah, so we have an, we have a a new uh Windows thing. Uh, so, did we, what was the other thing? Well, we gave away stuff in the previous one, I don't know if you guys noticed, because we were so late in everything.
Uh, are we giving away stuff, we're giving away the entry for the Glimo.
That's right, that's at the end of the day, or end of the the event, this event, not the event, this event, this. This Nor, so, going on for the rest of the month, any big things, just a shout out to people?
Um, we just expect a lot of bug fixes, a lot of uh other fixes rolling through, we'll have uh new whoa times, um. And a bunch of other stuff that's just gonna be rolling out as soon as we can get it tested and ready, so. Um, just stay tuned and tomorrow is gonna be our maintenance day at eighteen hundred server time. Uh, because we were not in yesterday, so, uh, there should be in-game server announcements to warn people, but. Um, there's always the people that tweet us when we go down for an unscheduled. Well, they tweet us even though we're down like on Mondays at eighteen hundred.
We get tweets and Facebook PMs, but uh, just so you know, so the game will be down anyways for our, our maintenance, but. During that time, we also will not have uh new registration and payments will not be available, cuz we are doing some maintenance on the backend as well.
Yeah, for about one to two hours tomorrow, starting at maintenance time, uh, it won't affect. Our game necessarily, except for if you try and make a payment on the website or you're trying to register a new account, um, it'll be down for about one to two hours.
Yeah, so don't be surprised, I know that always kinda pops up whenever we do that despite. You know, give it a couple of hours and you'll be able to make payments if you just happen to wanna make payments at that time.
They're just doing, they're doing updates and upgrades and so they have to bring it down during that time, and so it just happened that we happen to be doing a maintenance at the same time, so. Um, our players probably won't see a big reaction to it, I hope, so.
Hopefully, Arbelist asks, any plans to release some of the unreleased but already made costumes and accessories? For example, the apple of Archer and the Dracula capes, I would love a Dracula cape.
Yes, uh, plan, not definitive plans, but I've been talking to. Uh, some people and having some ideas about stuff we can do in game to um. Use those existing stuff and bring them in and make them accessible. Uh, right now, we're trying to see what is the best option to do that, is it diamonds, is it chance coupons? Um, is any sync? Yeah, so yes. We just have to put together the list and then we're gonna determine how we're gonna do that and then do it.
Some people are gonna pay a lot of zenny for it, what?
I think a lot of those would be really good, um.
Any particular favorite?
Type things, you know, cuz um, uh, especially like the 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 Dracula cape is really cool looking, um, but. Um, we would need to look at the item too, because I would wanna make it probably tradable, I don't know. Um, because a lot of people might buy into it so then they can buy or they can sell it on the market or, I don't know, we'll see, so.
All of the above, as long as I get a Dracula cape, I'm happy. My character needs a Dracula cape, I just wanna point that out, he needs a Dracula cape and a Dracula outfit, I'm just, so make all those things available. And Eppoli says, can I model the next costume item release? If you wanna come on down and do it, please feel free.
If you're VCR, you can definitely do it on our test server.
Can I, that, can I, can I like make models and stuff on the test server?
No, I just mean that they'll probably just put it on their character on the test server.
Uh, you guys plan to someday put half price or discount in the diamonds?
Yes, there is a plan to redo. We're gonna be looking at all the prices of all our items in the Kaffa shop and. Uh, one big one is to be reducing the prices of the diamonds overall, cuz I think that they're too mu- uh, too much and we can see that they're too much for a lot of people and so. Um, yes, my goal is to get that in this month, we're settling on prices right now. Um, we're actually using data we got from the market and so seeing what people kind of value things at so that we can set new prices. Um, cuz we know that the KP rate, even though that's not something that we necessarily run, is um. Inflating really, really high and so we want to make those items more available to more people, so more people can help control the KP rate. And hopefully it'll go down because of that, cuz that's certain, something similar that we saw with the drop rates when we changed in July and stuff, that. A lot of items that were only being controlled in the market by a certain people then became more available and then you saw um. A price decrease in the items in the market and so more people found them accessible and you don't have to save up. Millions of zenny to buy one item.
So, uh, next thing is by Eppoli, can we have less non-tradable items, my storage is suffering?
Yes, the the no trade items was a policy that Gravity had as far as like event items go. Uh, I think with, um, especially Kaffa shop items, I don't know if there's any that need to be no trade. Uh, I know that um about a year ago, we had a discussion with the old development team about making any new item. No trade, or no, I'm sorry, tradable, because of the idea that you're, you know, you're purchasing this item, you should be able to do whatever you want with. No trade, or no, I'm sorry, tradable, because of the idea that you're, you know, you're purchasing this item, you should be able to do whatever you want with it. Yes, um I don't like the idea of no trade, I uh no trade and no option to even move the item, so. Yeah, we'll be looking at those.
Yeah, I agree. Alright, Freaky Jen asks, with the newer development team, is it possible to have more mount costume design events? Just like back when Alpaca and Royal Costume Design won and they got implemented?
Yes, um we're still getting those teams up and running as far as the RO2 tools and stuff go. Uh but in the future, that's definitely a possibility, and I think it's uh a lot cooler to have designs and concepts come from the community. Aside from the Squiggle Mount, which needs to be a thing, but I think that one actually came from the community. No, it did come from the community.
Uh and Eden does break up, uh point out Freaky Jen, we had a co- costume design event in February. And hopefully we'll have a timeline for implementa- implementation for things like this soon. And yeah, we had the Monster Beauty Contest, which were basically to design new costumes and stuff. I think we got. We got the first one in, which was the um. He has a scythe.
Oh, Baphomet.
Baphomet.
Yeah.
The Baphomet costume went in. I don't know if they ever put in or how, if they worked on the others.
I don't know, I'd have to see.
Yeah, well, I have to relook at that. Um Ria Kuma, Ria Koom says. It'd be nice to have permanent noble pekko mount for master level one plus players that will eventually sell. Sold it at a new mount NPC in Morocco.
Mountains need a lot of love, so we'll be looking at mounts too.
I think there needs to be a little bat mount. And by little, a huge bat mount, just wanna point that out. Oh, and then Dark Res says, oh, this is more than a question, this is a suggestion. You have thought about creating some kind of storage. So you can move items not tradable to other characters. That would give an use to the function cannot share this item between characters on this account.
So we've been wanting account storage since before the game came out, and so alongside those customization options. Uh we're also looking at how things like account-wide storage and account-wide VIP and and things like that. Uh can be implemented so that we can bring that to players too. So account-wide storage, I believe, is what they're suggesting. Is on the list of things to figure out how we can implement.
Yeah, and that's right, uh Eden reminded me, uh the other thing we had was called the Designer's Ambitions Event. Was another costume design thing. Yeah, they had some awesome like hat designs, I remember. A giant familiar mount? Yes, I want a giant familiar mount. Think of a winner fourth Monster Beauty Contest was Himmelmeese's dra- yes, that's right, Himmelmeese's dragon. Trying to remember who all won.
Was that as a costume?
Yeah, it was one, it was, it was one of the winners was a dragon costume.
I'll check that out, it sounds interesting.
Yeah, a lot of, lot of great, uh, okay, I think of a winner, pay me and I'll gladly work on designs for you, Canadians taking your jobs. Yggdrasil crowned for life. I remember my paper bag entry to the designer ambitions. I remember Eppoli, your, your uh paper bag. Giant unfamiliar mount is like when you park your car at the mall and can't find it when you come out.
Two costume sets that actually uh Gravity didn't realize were gonna be as popular as they were. Um one was the, uh what is it called? Was it the the one with the horse mask on it? Uh and then the other one was um the hot dog. They actually didn't even have a plan for the hot dog costume, but somebody made it and they're like. We don't even know if your players would enjoy this, and I'm like, are you kidding me? They would love this, and so.
That's right, and I wanted to do an Oktoberfest event for that thing.
Yeah, and so.
Still wanna do that.
And so, yeah, that was, it was interesting.
Yes. Alright, so we are now at six oh one, so that is our time. Uh so, no more questions. Thank you for joining us. This has been the RO2 Town Hall with Nor.
Nor, that's me.
And uh me, Siun Veritas. Uh thank you for joining us. We'll see you at the end of the next, this month, yeah, yeah, end of this month will be the next one. Um we also have our weekly meet, uh week, uh Ragnarok Online two weekly broadcast, so feel free to join us then as well. Bye.